All right, it is 6:01 PM. I'd like to call the Concord-Carla Regional School District meeting to order.
The Concord School Committee to order?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'd like to start tonight's meeting in the wake of everything that's been happening this week with a moment of silence for Jimmy McIntosh, Maisie O'Donnell, and Hannah Wasserman as we open up the regional meeting. Thank you. As you can imagine, we're conducting this meeting with heavy hearts and we're running on empty, especially our administrators, given this and our hope to get Dr. Hunter home for so much-needed rest. We're going to forego a few parts of the agenda, so there will be no public comment during the regional meeting tonight. The student update has been removed. And we're really happy to have the CPAC here, as well as at Thorough Playground. So thank you so much for being here on such a heavy night. We could use you here. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hunter to open with some statements and comments.
Thank you. We just wanted to take the opportunity to really acknowledge...
We're calling in progress, sorry.
Acknowledge the community's extraordinary response over the last week and share where we are as a school district. I wrote it, which isn't normally my style, but given the content, I thought I would be better that way. "The past week's been the most difficult time for the entire school community and for CCHS particularly. The tragic and sudden loss of three members of the CCHS senior class has been unimaginable, all while we hold a fourth in our third thoughts for recovery. I share a heavy heart, but one that is full of gratitude and appreciation for the extraordinary resilience, compassion, and care that has been evident. Sunday night made that feel tangible; the days since grew off of that foundation. I first thanked the leaders at CCHS, co-principals Brian Miller and Katie Stahl. Their stable and steady leadership creates a structured and safe environment for students and staff. The guidance department of the high school has been key to ensuring the wellness of those most in need. Every member of the high school faculty and staff is providing care and important routines to students despite their own grief. That environment of normalcy and support allowed us general success overall over the three days this week. As we progress through this week and the upcoming services, plans for the remainder of the year, and then senior events will be our priority. The outpouring of resources within and outside the community has been a daily buoy. We thank the Carla Public Schools and Superintendent Jim O'Shea and his dog Scout." The dogs are a theme. "The partnership with the police departments of both Concord and Carla has been above and beyond what anyone would have expected. Our great thanks to everyone outside the schools who have been key to the return since Monday. Among those onsite in the schools are the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, NEMLEC, and their star crisis team, which brings in resources from across Massachusetts, Riverside Trauma, the Elliott Center, retired counselors, and counselors from other local school districts, including Newton, Lexington, Sudbury, and Acton-Boxborough. Counselors are available at any time for students and staff in need. The presence of dozens, dozens on Monday, of comfort dogs has been significant, coming from many, many sources, especially police departments across all of eastern Massachusetts, pets and people, and many individuals with trained pups, including the Watson pups." Thank you, Brian. "Food is comforting, staff and students. We are so thankful for the donations, including Duncan, which provides daily coffee and treats for the entire high school, and snacks from the Carla PTO and CCHS PA. Those are just a sample of the offers that continue daily. Today alone, we received flowers and cookies from five school districts and an offer to provide staff lunch next week from a local restaurant. We miss Hannah, Jimmy, and Maisie terribly."
Miss Hannah, Jimmy, and Maisie terribly. Their memories and spirits will be the model for how we move forward. Thank you again to all who got us this far. We are very grateful. Thank you, everyone. Like I said, this is going to be a hard meeting for us to get through. We ask you to just bear with us. And we appreciate all the support. Like Dr. Hunter mentioned, it's been a really difficult time, but the community has rallied around so many people, and we are very, very, very grateful for that.
And grateful to do all the regular things we're going to do tonight. Yes, we need the positivity of that.
Absolutely. Do you want to kick off the recognitions?
Yeah, I also just want to add to that just a great big thank you to you and your team. It is nothing short of amazing what services you provided, not just the kids, but the entire community. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Shifting to something lighter. We have long been talking about building a playground at Thorough. And an amazing group of volunteers, parents, students, staff, have worked really hard over the last many months to make that a reality. And tonight, they are here. I'm going to bring Mr. Sparks up to kick us off, if that's okay.
Thank you all for giving us some time.
Need a microphone?
Thank you all so much for giving us time tonight to talk a little bit about our playground project, Thorough's Backyard, a project that is near and dear to our hearts. We have some gifts and reading material for all of you, some pins, and there'll be a test at the end. I think Carrie's provided some context, too. I just want to also express my deep appreciation for Superintendent Hunter, to Bob Conroy, and to Angel Charles for all of their help and support through this journey, which has now gone over just about a year and a half. We started this last year with a simple premise as part of our Master Campus Plan. Right? We want a playground that is fun, nature-inspired, and inclusive. And through the design, many iterations, and a lot of collaboration and connecting with community members, I think we're at a place that we're all very happy with. So I'm thrilled to be here with our student leadership group, a group of 4th graders. Last year, we put a call out to 3rd grade leaders who were interested in supporting this project, and these fine young people came forward. And it's been an absolute pleasure working alongside of them for this time, as they helped us to survey their peers, asking simple questions like, "What makes play fun?" "What do you like to do in play spaces? What do you like to do on playgrounds?" We looked at all their data. We analyzed it. They did a recent coin challenge to raise money on the part of the students and raised up to $1,000, which was great. You know, they put on a popsicle party for the winning group, the kindergarteners. They helped with the design and the fundraising, and they've just been fantastic. So I do want to introduce them. They embody our core values at Thorough and at Concord Public Schools and demonstrate leadership, advocacy, and voice, which is what we're big on. So I do just want to introduce them first. Just give a little wave. Madison Toronto, Stella Wong, Eli Agemian, Leo Rothier, Archie Kinch, Robbie Morgan, Simon Goodrich, and Gautam Siva. And I do want to also express my gratitude to the Adult Playground Group, who have been doing so much hard work behind the scenes. I am so fortunate and privileged to have the opportunity to work alongside and really learn from some real experts, and I want to acknowledge all of them, too. So our chair, Mitch Brooks, Courtney Ward, I'm not sure if she's here tonight, Christina Asperu, Ben Klein, who's our money guy, Mike LaFante, who couldn't make it tonight, Adrian Fess, who is our CPAC representative, Matt Strashin, he couldn't be here tonight, Aaron Zahichich. Did I get it? Aaron's worked closely with me with the student group and keeps me focused. We actually got the chance to present today at our all-school meeting and share the work and share some of the design, and there was a buzz of excitement all across the school. So a lot of happy kids. And of course, our school committee representative, Carrie Rankin, we've been working closely with as well. And our PTG presidents are here. We've been coordinating with Mary Little and Colleen Bixby. Thank you all. And here also is Joe McMahon. He is our Altplay vendor and has gone through, I thought it was more like 30, but he said we're 15 iterations. Very patient. But I think, as we were talking in the parking lot, it speaks to the commitment to getting it right, to getting a play space that all kids will love and taking into account all stakeholder voices. So now I'm going to stop talking, and I'll turn it over to the real show, our Thorough Huskies. So we'll invite them up, and if you want to stand in a line right here. And they're going to tell you about some of the work they've been doing.
When we were 3rd graders, we were each selected to represent Thorough's student body for the newly announced playground project. We have continued to serve as members of this team through our current year as 4th graders. It was a lot of work to set goals together, and we had fun reaching them, too. We have met as a group almost every Friday of the school year, and at some times, two, other times, two. We think it is important for our community to know how thankful we are that this project can happen in an amount of time that allows the students at Thorough to see this project happen from start to finish. We were there when the idea was just getting started, and no one was sure what Thorough's backyard was. We have been there through the middle part, through hard work, researching, fundraising, and planning. We'll be here celebrating and playing together with our community when we are 3rd graders, when this project is done. One of the very first things our group looked at together was a survey that was taken by every class and grade at Thorough's school and staff, too. We looked at the results of the surveys and helped the full committee identify choices for a new playground that were important to the entire student and staff population at Thorough. We had to sort through some of the less realistic but fun ideas, such as a swimming pool or human-sized hamster wheels, as well as ideas that really made sense. As we sorted the ideas, we started to notice some really important things kept coming up. Some general things kept popping up, like nature, everyone, and fun. Also, specific equipment, like more swings and a zip line, as well as slides, were really important to students.
Early in the year, we were deciding on the pieces of equipment, and we thought we should have some musical instruments, especially since the other playgrounds in Concord don't have any. We started researching different instruments and their sounds. We were surprised by the multitude of results, but we loved the idea of instruments just played by hand that could also be used by a lot of people at the same time. This allowed us to decide on the street quartet. The whole committee loved it because their sounds will create a zen-like atmosphere for the playground so that they feel joy while playing with their friends and family.
Since this playground is for Thorough students, we wanted to set our own goal to get the school involved. Once we decided on our mission to get musical equipment, we decided to raise money for it. Our goal was to raise $1,000. Within one month, we raised just over $875 by starting a coin challenge, where all the grades competed against each other to raise the most. It was kindergarteners who won and got to have a popsicle party. We made it to $1,000 this month, and our entire school earned a PJ/Steffy Day this Friday. Some students and families set up donor pages and have raised almost $8,000 by asking neighbors, friends, and family members to donate. Students have also been able to spread the word by talking at Thorough events like Math Night and Book Fair. Our team here has been working hard to get out the units to all the 400 donors. We tried to handwrite them at first, but realized that'd be really hard to accomplish.
We aren't done yet, even though we have raised a lot of money and came up with a design we all love for the entire community. We will keep working together and finding ways to help bring our school together. We hope to help with the actual build, too, when the day comes. During our meetings, we talk a lot about when the playground will open because we are so excited for that day to be here. We hope that our school can have a huge celebration that we will take part in planning and maybe even have an official ribbon hanging for.
Before we finish, we want to be sure you've heard some of the important parts of this project for us, the students of Thorough Elementary. We love that this project reminds us of our school's namesake, Henry David Thoreau. He was a person who loved nature and understood the world around us. Some big topics adults are concerned about kids are their mental, emotional, physical, and social health. A really big part of staying healthy is having a place to be outside, moving our bodies, building independence and friendships. This playground is not just a place for us to play during the school day, but we know it will be a safe, happy destination where kids would choose to have fun in our free time, too.
We really love that Thorough's backyard is more than just a playground. It's a place for kids to explore and experience freedom, embrace challenges, work together, play side by side, and most of all, a place to have fun. Thorough Elementary is a really special school in Concord that encourages caring, kindness, and values all members of its community. The entire Thorough's backyard team has put so much thought, energy, time, and passion into designing a space that will make amazing play possible for all children to be part of. This playground is something that everyone can find joy in.
We have told you a lot about our team. We hope you take time to look at the documents we have created, such as the information about the musical equipment we chose, the blog post that our group wrote, images from our work together, a sample of our thank you note that we delivered to donors, and Thorough's backyard pins that some of our team made. Thank you for your support. If you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them. Thorough cannot wait to play together in our new backyard.
I'm sold. That was incredible. Thank you, guys, so much. Here, I heard, like, you guys did videos, you wrote thank you letters, a blog post, regular meetings. That's a lot of work. Thank you. I hope that it's as fun and exciting and inclusive and enjoyable for everybody as we all hope that it is, that we all hope it will be. Does anybody have any questions for the kids?
Have to be through all of the chairs.
I know.
So you talked about some of the equipment. What's the one piece of equipment that the students are most excited about?
The zip line.
The zip line.
That does not surprise me. Awesome.
Just a quick comment, kind of what Carrie was saying, it's a great process, and you guys ran through the gamut, teamwork. You learned what it's like to work on a committee. You gathered requirements, you took input from your friends, and I'm sure you got a lot of input, and it's hard to get that down into tangible stuff. You managed to a budget. I don't know, and you brought it all together with an amazing presentation. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, in 30 years, I hope you consider running for school.
Crushed it.
In all seriousness, I went to Thorough a long time ago, a couple of us did, and I was jealous of the current playground, and I've seen pictures, and I know all the work and fundraising that's going into this new one, and now I'm super jealous. So I'm really happy for everyone in the Thorough community, and I think it's going to draw a lot of people from Willard and from Alcott and from other places. So thank you very much.
You can always come and play, Andrew.
Well, I have to bring my kids then, or else it's just weird.
That's okay, too. Well, thank you.
Good work, guys.
Great job.
Thank you very much. You should be really proud of yourselves.
If you notice their shirts, the rings, they're also rocks, right? But we believe that Thorough has the power of connection, connection to their school, connection to their friends, and connection to nature. They're also on sale, or will be on sale shortly.
Well, thank you again. Thank you all so much. Very welcome.
We are going to invite Justin, Joe, and Mitch to join us, just to kind of talk through the actual design, and then we'll have a discussion later in the CPS agenda where we'll talk about it as a committee.
Great.
Yeah, do you guys want to come up here? Yeah.
Can I just say it's good to see so many people in person? This project has been on Zoom a lot, so that's all, all the committee members in the audience, and Joe and Mitch being live is really fun.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for all of this work. I just want to open it by just saying that I have been a, like, involved-ish, not nearly to the extent that everyone in this room has been. And I am just, like, in awe of the commitment and dedication from Mr. Sparks. Your perspective, Mitch, everyone on the committee has just been working so hard and tirelessly to gather feedback, to do what's right for kids and the school community, and I'm just really, really thankful. And that's been not easy. And so, anyway, just a big thank you.
Thank you.
So now, if you want to just kind of walk us through where you landed...
Yeah, we're happy to do that. We, if you remember, I don't know if it was this year or last year, we brought to you a Master Campus Plan?
About a year ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the areas that needed improvement at Thorough was the play space. So we tackled that first because it's the most fun. And we also had a substantial gift to get started, which was great. And we took that, we knew that we wanted to do a community build to involve the community as much as possible. So formed a committee and quickly found Joe, who specializes in this at Altplay, and got to work sometime last April, surveying staff, surveying students, and analyzed all of that data and came up with some elements that Mitch kind of put together in a rendering. And from there, we kind of revised as we went, based on feedback. We showed it to our student group, we showed it to our staff. We deliberated a lot as a leadership committee and made adjustments, taking into account stakeholder input from all over. So after about 13 iterations, we're here, and we're happy to put forward a design that Carrie can show you. It's actually really cool. It's a flyover.
Can I share my screen?
That will show, I think, an aerial representation of what we hope the playground will look like. The zip line is definitely a big hit. We're also really proud of the fact that we were able to, thanks to a contribution from the district...
An estate? Oh, well, we've had multiple sources. There's an estate donation here that we're really fortunate.
A large estate donation from the Joyce Wintall Estate in the amount of just about $200,000.
$200,000.
And from the district, we were able to rubberize just about 80-plus percent of the surfacing, which will go a long way in making it accessible for all.
Yeah, we closed that delta so that we're sure it's an accessible space for everybody.
Yes, I do. Do you want me to start with that, the flyover?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's start with a flyover, and then maybe we'll run it through once, and then we can stop and explain a little bit what we're looking at, if that makes sense. It's not very long.
I mean, if I can help, Carrie.
I have it right here. I don't know if the audio will work. I don't know if there is.
There's no audio.
Okay, great.
I can hum if everybody wants me to.
We were hoping for music.
Okay. Yeah, there you go. It's a little choppy.
It's a little choppy, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, we can see the elements.
So you want to explain it as it goes, or...
I was going to run through once, if that's okay. So we are not getting a Reed's Fairy Shed there. That's just what we could get for images. Yeah, all right. So if you just want to run it through one more time, and I'll try to explain what we're looking at the best I can. So right there, where are the kids? That's the music that they've selected. They've created a space. Music has many benefits for children and adults, and I think what you guys picked is some really nice equipment. I mean, one of the things, like those tall pieces that are right there, not only will they make sound, but like, for someone who might have, like, some hearing problems, like, if you feel them, you can feel the vibration on them. So they really offer that kind of unique experience for some kids. And you can keep on going. So this does start entering into the vision of maybe the natural area a little bit, where we're going to do some paths and some plantings and things like that. And that's kind of to be determined what we're doing. You can stop it right there. So that is, everybody wants swings? They've got lots of swings. And there's an ADA seat swing in there. There's also a basket swing, which, for me, it's one of the, you know, when we talk about inclusive playgrounds, what we're looking to do is have a playground that everyone can enjoy. You know, we're talking about typically developing children, children that might have some mobility impairments, some maybe a child on the autism spectrum. So the basket swing seems to be that place where you pile nine kids on there and seven kids push, and they all, they don't die, and they have a great time. So, I mean...
It's a good selling.
Yes. But it's one of those pieces where everyone can enjoy, and it's so important. And I think that all those swings will be used probably through recess. You guys might have to have a swing monitor. You can keep on going. So this is still part of the natural area. And again, we're still working on this a little bit.
I'll just add, Joe, based on the survey, not all students like to play on swings and slides. Some students just like to run off and play tag or just sit and talk, so there's something for those kids, too, like to engage in imaginative play.
So you're coming up onto, this is the zip line that the children were talking about, and it's a, they call it a zoom track, but it has a disc seat for typically developing children, and there's also an ADA seat there for children that might have some issues with upper body support or mobility issues. And again, as everybody sees, it's, right now, we have all rubber under that entire area, so that is completely accessible by wheelchair.
Want to talk about this?
You can go. Sorry.
Sorry. It's a little delayed.
Yeah, it's choppy. I don't know why. So right there, that is, so that's kind of one of the focal points of the playground in terms of height. That is 12 feet high. The deck, or it's actually rope that the kids are going to be staying on, but there's some platforms in there. Off that, it's a little bit hard to see, but we have a hammock, we have an overhead event, we have that rubber climber, so it offers many different types of climbing and play. I can imagine some kids are just going to use this as a social area, where they're going to sit up there and just talk about how their day is going and maybe make fun of the principal or something.
The principal.
And then there's a high slide, which is kind of what all the children want. And just to talk about, really quick, about how we got here. When they talk about like 12 or 13 different iterations, it wasn't like, okay, they always started with like a rope climber and a zip line and all these things. We added, we had a wood playground, we had a traditional post-and-platform playground, combinations of, and then the group finally landed on... combinations of, and then we finally landed on like something like this, and we made numerous changes just even to this piece. Right there, there's, that's an overhead event, so monkey bars, again, the kids can sit up on that. And we have two spinners in there. You can do just a little bit more. So that is a double cone spinner that can be used as both a climber and a spinner. And then further down the road, there's an accessible spinner. Whatever you're putting in, when you're redesigning an inclusive playground, you try to put in different levels of challenge with the same activity. So I would consider like the accessible world a level one, where, where everybody can get on that. The cone spinner, even though it's a little bit more advanced, but a child, say like in a wheelchair, could physically transfer out onto that and be within that whole entire group playing on that also. In the front, they really wanted to add some, some climbing on rocks. Again, I can imagine this being a social area for children to, to play on. So there's some rope that's integrated with that. It's a, it's a low climber, so it's not all that challenging, but it, it offers a different texture, too. It's like, it's a, almost like a, it's called a GFRC, which is basically cement with fiberglass in it, but it feels like real rock. So, so they really thought this through to get to this point. So I think they're happy with it.
Yeah.
Joe's been really, really cooperative and flexible with us to get to this, so we're just.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. There've been a lot of iterations.
Yes.
It hasn't been that bad. I've seen worse.
Does anybody have any questions about the process or the design? Later on in the CPS portion of the meeting, we will be voting on both the design and then also to accept the donation from the committee. But are there any questions that?
Just a shout out to the fundraising that went on here. It was really amazing, the amount of money raised in a very short amount of time to get us to this. What's the target, Mitch? 600?
Our condition target is 610, and with the kind of firm verbal commitments that we have so far, we feel very confident we're going to get there.
That's great.
And we can kind of give you more contingency in that one as well.
Amazing, so.
Donations.
$610,000.
Donations from, you know, the students and $5 to 50, to 100, to 25,000.
Yeah.
Actually, the latest was 36,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a.
It's extraordinary.
Yes. Thank you to everyone who's donated and across the commit, across the community.
I think you guys really set out for this to be a community effort, and in so many respects it has, like from input to the design, to how it looks and feels, to fundraising across the board, and then potentially to the, how it's built. So thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for the time tonight, and we will keep you updated on, well, pending a successful vote. We'll, we'll keep you updated. We hope to do a community build this summer. Our initial goal was to open it by the start of the school year. That's to be determined at this point.
All right.
But it'll be close. We hope to have it open in the fall for the kids to enjoy. So we'll do a ribbon cutting, and we hope you all can stop by.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
You might just want to know what the vote's going to be later.
I did.
Okay. And public comments later, too.
Public comment is in CPS.
Well, thank you. We'll give everyone a chance if nobody else wants to stick around for budget items and other things.
Yeah.
We do have CPAC, but if anyone wants to leave, we'll give you a couple minutes.
This could have really.
Thank you all.
Really good example of what their future.
Yeah, that's great.
Exactly.
Thank you.
They have that time, so we'll get them home, in a while.
Good night, thank you. You all did a great job. You can present, do you want to present it, and then we can vote on it later?
Yeah, I mean, it's just in this envelope, so this is the balance of our fundraising so far, and so I can give.
This guy will take that.
We wanted a big check, but it didn't work.
Still more time.
It's a big check. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. All right, we're going to move on to the updates. I think that, just to start off with the biggest update that we have, in addition to the wonderful one we just had on the Thoreau Playground, is last week, we had the Finance Committee made their, I'll say their votes or recommendations on the warrant articles that are coming to Concord. And all of the school warrant articles were passed, including both budgets. And I should say passed, recommended. So, so that was, that's probably the biggest update. I want to personally, again, thank the collaboration with the Finance Committee, especially Lois, Eric, and Lindsay Liss on the guideline that we worked on, Alexa and I, and Carrie, and Dr. Hunter worked on back in, my gosh, October.
Fall.
Yeah, in the fall. That work came to fruition, especially around, at a district tuition. We had a really, really thorough discussion, and it paid off just to have that conversation at the budget discussion this past week. I think there's just, people are starting to see the thoughtful conversations that need to happen around who we are as a community. We just spent some time talking about inclusive, being an inclusive culture, an equitable culture, a diverse culture, and we had some really good conversations about that last week when we were talking about special education, as well as accessibility for ADA compliance at the amenities building. So I just want to say thank you because it's easy at Finance Committee to talk about dollars and cents, but it was actually a really thoughtful conversation, and I really, really appreciate that. Some other comments and questions did come up, like per pupil, there's still some questions from individual committee members, but I think as a, as a total, we just, again, had a really good conversation about just looking at our community and saying, we're going to look at this as a community-wide initiative and make sure we take care of each other. And that's was really, I just want to make sure that the Finance Committee knows how much we appreciate the collaboration. I think second, just getting into the amenities building, there were some questions that came up that by the end of the meeting weren't necessarily in the purview of the, the vote for the amenities building, but just some questions about the project that Bob and the other professionals are, are working on with Public Works and the Water and Sewer Department. So we'll have an update maybe at the next meeting on some of that, but don't want to ignore it. And again, I appreciate Alan joining the meeting from Public Works or Water and Sewer. Sorry, I'm still learning all the names of the departments in Concord, they're different from Carlisle. And just, again, just the collaboration, we really appreciate them making the time to, to come out to the meeting and have that discussion. The other update, and you jump in as well, the, Carrie and I meet with the PTGs monthly. We have teacher appreciation coming up next week, so you're going to see some things around the community that the PTG presidents have been working on across all the schools that we really appreciate. And I would just echo what we've said at the beginning, we, this is a, the teachers are hurting as well, especially at CCHS, but it's just also been every year. There's a lot going on.
There's a lot.
And we really appreciate the PTG presidents and all their wonderful ideas to recognize all of the staff and faculty and teachers across both communities and showing up. And we hope you can see what comes out on People's Lawns next week for recognition in, in that regard. What else?
I think you covered it.
Yeah? Okay. Anyone else have any liaison updates?
Just have a couple of quick things in the amenities building related, just to keep everybody in the loop. Before the break, Julie and I recorded a podcast that is part of the Carlisle Podcast Series, so I got to be with a real, you know, legend doing my first podcast. I'm also working with Erin just on a webpage for the district, using all the materials that we approved in the meeting in Carlisle. Speaking of Carlisle, last night I met with Carlisle Rec to walk them through the project, and they voted to support it at Carlisle Town Meeting, so they will make mention of that on the 18th. And then just lastly, before the town meeting, about an hour beforehand in Carlisle, we're going to try a poster session, so anyone who has articles can have a poster and people can walk around and ask questions. The goal is to give people a chance to ask questions beforehand and hopefully speed up things in the actual meeting. And I just wanted to just kind of poll this group, are we good with, again, based off of the materials we've already approved, if I just put together a, a poster, because it is due early next week, so.
It's from the, I think if it's from the existing materials, and it really is like for like, maybe we could just send it out to the committee, we could look at it before it posts.
Can you also share the podcast? Is it out?
It's not out yet.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully soon.
Go up on Instagram.
He's been putting them up like one article a day, so.
Countdown.
Make you wait for it.
Yep. So is it the, it's the Town of Carlisle Instagram, correct? That's where he's been posting them, right?
Yes, and then you can listen to them on Apple, Spotify.
Yep.
YouTube, because they're videos as well.
I forgot about that.
Yes.
All right. I think Lori, you gave your update, but do you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay. All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda. We have the surplus CCHS Science Department materials. We did get an $1,000 anonymous donation to the class of 2025, and then the warrants, as well as the accounts payable and payroll. And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents, do you want to go for CPS?
Maybe you could go for the region.
Now, the region, I would just, I would just echo, I think, what Lori mentioned in her opening comments, we have received just so many wonderful, wonderful notes of support for the community and offers of, of support. And I would just say that in addition to what we've already mentioned, we're doing our best to, to hear all of those. It's been a good, a good kind of overwhelming with all the support, and I would say just keep following the process that we are to make sure that it's coming in the right way and we're able to actually triage it and put it to, to good use. So, you know, there is the, the email for the school committee, if you don't want to reach directly out to Dr. Hunter and the co-principals, but we would just say thank you very much to the entire community for that.
Yeah, there's nothing into the, other than all of that into CPS. But, and just to echo that, we've also heard from like fellow school committee members in other communities, I mean, it's just been from all, all channels.
All right, we can move into the discussion part. Angel, we have CPAC. You're welcome to, come on up. Sorry, CPAC and then special education. My apologies, I read fast.
They go together.
Yes, Ashley and Adrian, please, you first. My apologies.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So we sent a slideshow. I have it on my laptop, but I don't know if you have it to put up. And I can just kind of look at mine and I'll say, next slide, does that work? Where I can hook mine in however you want.
If you give me a minute.
Yeah, no worries. It's wanting me to sign in again anyway, so. But while I'm doing that, I'll introduce myself. I'm Ashley Healy. I'm the president of the CPAC this year. I have three kids at Willard.
Just a second, Ashley, we may have to use your microphone or tilt the one in front of you towards you.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'm not, I'm not.
That's great.
Experienced here, but thank you for having me. I'm Ashley Healy. I'm the president of the CPAC this year. I have three kiddos at Willard and two on IEPs, and I've been on the board for four years. This is my first year as president.
Hi, my name is Adrienne Query-Fiss. I have, I am the vice president of CPAC. I have two children at Thoreau. This is my first year on the board and my first year in a leadership role. And that's it.
Just, just really quickly, just because this is the regional committee, you, just to clarify, you guys are K through 12 for CPAC?
Yes, yes.
Just want to make sure everyone's in the know on that. Yep.
100%. Thanks. So, yes, this is just kind of a quick overview of our year. Again, we were, we were new president and vice president this year. So if you go to the next slide, just quickly explaining, you know, CPAC is a volunteer group of parents in the district. We are an advisory group for school committee and the administration on pretty much the gamut of matters pertaining to kids in special education, on IEPs or 504s in the district from age three to 22. And our group, as you were just clarifying, Julie, serves the Concord Public Schools and also the Regional School District. So next slide. We offer support and connections to families through coffees, office hours, and sort of parent-to-parent support. Next one. We also provide information, education, and resources to families and also the greater community through a variety of means like speakers, workshops, events, and our social media accounts. Next one. And we have a goal of fostering greater acceptance, understanding, and inclusion, and especially awareness of our special education community. It's a very large and diverse community, as you can imagine, and we're fortunate to be in a district that really takes all those needs into account, but we're sort of trying to just be there to make sure that the community at large understands the issues that face our students in the schools as well, and to support the district around that, too. And then the last one.
Skip one.
Yeah, no, this is the right one. Sorry. For some reason in my head, I thought I'd be doing it. I'm sorry to make you have to.
No, it's totally fine.
And we meet regularly with the, with the administration, and we sort of have that open communication, keep each other apprised of the issues that are coming up on our end that may, maybe we hear from parents and that the district wants to make us aware of. So those are our main activities. I'll turn it over. Next slide, please. So this is a quick rundown of who we are. Ashley at the president, vice president, our membership chairs are Rupam Garg and Lauren Judge, Karen Hodges does our events, Chris Frieder Tarlo does our publicity, and we have two at-large members, we have Matt Conroy, and Millie Jacob is a Carlisle representative. So there is a non-CPS presence sort of representing children, students under ninth grade. Next, please. So we, because it was sort of a turnover for the organization, we set some goals early in the year to just think about sort of who we were and what we wanted. And so the first one was just to be more visible in both communities, in Concord and Carlisle. And, and that means the community at large, not necessarily just attached to school. Provide enhanced, oh, next. Thank you. Provide enhanced opportunities for parents to connect with other parents, so parent peers, and that helps with support, resources, and also just shared experiences really important in what we do. Next, please. We, one of our other goals is to build strong relationships with other CPACs, and especially Carlisle, who has been really wonderful and open and thoughtful as a partner in sort of what we do. So thank you, Carlisle. Carlisle also had a new board this year, and they have a little bit, you know, obviously fewer people throughout, so it was really great to be able to connect with them. And we, we happen to, their co-presidents, and we happen to have kids all around the same age, so it's really special, too, because we know all of our kids will be in high school together in fewer years than we'd like to think. So it's a really great opportunity, and we can sort of support each other, so.
I do see that a few of them are on tonight.
Oh, great.
Yeah, Al Medina, Jessie, Meredith, and others are on tonight, so thank you so much for being here.
Next slide. So some of the ways we worked to achieve these goals this year were by instituting weekly office hours at the library. So in the past, we've sort of invited parents to reach out to us on social media or contact us at our conquercepac@gmail email address, which is all great, and those are monitored. But we also realized that some, some things that parents might be facing or questions might be very difficult or very personal, and it's can be kind of hard to sort of send a message to an anonymous account. You don't know who is reading it. So we really wanted to give people an opportunity to sort of just talk to somebody in person if they had a question. And so every Tuesday, I go from 11:00 to 12:30, and I sit in the café area at the main library, one of our community's greatest treasures is our library. And I sit there, and I have a little CPAC sign, and people, sometimes people don't come to see me, they just see the sign and they ask a question, or, you know, they might not even live in Concord, but they're like, oh, my sister lives in, you know, Waltham, and she's wondering about this, and I'm like, here's a great website. You know, I mean, I'm not an expert, but it's just nice to sort of see somebody. And on the third Tuesday of the month, we do evening hours. So we have one time a month where we do have somebody there from 6:00 to 8:00. So that's been really great, kind of a new thing. It's not always attended, but when we do, it feels very meaningful, so.
It's not always attended, but when we do, it feels very meaningful, so. Next slide. We also got a lot more active with our coffee gatherings this year. So when I joined the board, it was in the middle of COVID and everything we did was virtual or outside. So we only could have a few coffees here because as much as we want to connect and meet each other, people don't really want to sit outside at Ride Out Park in December, January. So, yeah, so this year we did our first two at Ride Out, but then we actually moved over to Salt Box Kitchen. And that's actually been great. We can kind of stay for a while, people order whatever they want. It's very comfortable, it's a great space. So we just had our, our seventh one this morning. And we had like seven or eight people. Dr. Williams was there. It was great to see folks just, we're just sort of out in the community that way, too. And we have our sign out. So again, that visibility aspect. Next slide. We also sort of took kind of a, a new approach to sort of having events that were out in the community this year. So they were open to the greater public. We held them, we held three of them, three of the four-part educational series were held at the library. And they were sort of on topics that were relevant to, we hope, everybody in the community, but also particularly relevant to kids with disabilities and just trying to get more people involved and engaged in those topics. And we partnered with local businesses to, to make that happen. Next slide. And again, we worked really closely with Carlisle CPAC board. I also should have mentioned on here, but I didn't think of it. But we have also been working more with the other PTGs. So that's been really great additional, you know, adding to the goal, right? Of just being in open communication with others in the community and bringing awareness. And finally, next one. We were able to collaborate with other areas, CPACs, both on our educational series and also we are sharing events through the Mass Pack Listserve, through social media. So sort of having more of a regional presence and being more active that way. And it's a really great opportunity to sort of get resources and ideas from other areas of the state who are doing the same work that we are. So that was really great, too. I'll turn it to you.
Next, please. Okay, so quick list. September 27th, Coffee at Ride Out. October 1st, Parents as Partners with our wonderful partners at the district. November 13th was the training on the new IEP form, also through the district, much gratitude. And then the 14th was a Coffee at Ride Out. Next, please. November 21st was Plate to Mind, which was a speaker series and panel about the effects of food and its, food on mood and brain chemistry. It was at the library, it was free, and we had a lovely turnout. Next, please. December 10th, Innovative Currents, Envisioning Outdoor Learning in the K-3 Education, also at the library. Same deal. December 12th, Coffee at Salt Box. January 16th, Coffee at Salt Box. January 23rd, Growth, Harmonizing Solitude Guidance and Freedom, also at CPL. February 25th, next, please. No, my, my mistake. Film screening of the Right to Read at Concord Carlisle High School. The 27th, Coffee at Salt Box. March 6th, Literacy Liberates, Bringing Literacy to the Light at, at, at the high school also. Thank you to the high school for that. March 27th, Coffee at Salt Box. April 30th, Coffee at Salt Box. And upcoming, very important, the 8th Annual CPAC Teacher/Teacher/Staff Appreciation Awards. There is currently a forum circulating. Parents and families are submitting comments and nominations of our wonderful staff and, and building folk. And they will be, they, I'm sorry, rephrase. They will receive a small gift and a lovely certificate. And some, the comments that we receive often go to the educators themselves, which as an educator is like one of the best rewards you can get. It's like knowing, feeling from families, like the direct comments and the, like, the direct impact of what you do. And so my understanding is that those are very important to our wonderful staff and we look forward to sharing those with them next week during Teacher Appreciation Week.
I'll just add one more thing that should have been on here. I added it to the slides that we're going to post on our website. But just so everyone knows, we also, speaking of working with PTGs, we were co-hosts of the Candidates Forum that took place at CCHS on March 31st, I believe it was, which again, was really big for us. We haven't always been included in those things, but it's so wonderful to be working closely with the other PTGs. And, and especially in a forum like that where, you know, it was a contested election and people with school-age kids really had a lot of questions and really needed to get that edification, that, you know, special ed parents and parents of kids in elementary school or middle school, whatever your contingency is. It's all overlapping, it's all related. So it's really wonderful to be included in that. I think that is all. So our next slide is just our contact information. Again, these are the, the sort of general handles and email. But we, Adrian and I are always open for questions or anything that anyone needs as well. And then the last slide, just ask if any of you have any questions for us.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I just have a question. Have you reached out to MECO at all since, MECO is part of our community as well? Have you reached out, so we can get all of your events, like on our newsletter as well?
So we were, we had a MECO liaison. We do not currently have a MECO liaison. It's an open position on the board. So I would love to connect if possible, because I would love to, we'd love to keep them apprised as well. It's hard when we don't have like a person who's like in a school or, you know, a program that can sort of relay the events and everything. But we always are looking for that if we can, so.
I think one of the best decisions you made was to move your communications out of emails that just went to special ed parents and put them in my newsletters and just invite the whole community in. So I agree, let's highlight them and get them in the newsletters the MECO families get, but everyone's had access all year because of the changes they made this year. It's, I think that was really positive.
I think they're going out in your emails and all of the, like, principal.
Yeah, they're, exactly. Much different than it used to be where you had to be a special ed parent to receive the CPAC.
We've been trying to be more on top of that. And it's, even with the PTG newsletters, you know, they all have like a weekly deadline kind of thing, but we've been trying to follow those and just make sure that we're getting the word out.
Definitely changed your visibility in the district because people see it all the time that you're actively doing things.
Somebody made that comment to me at the library one day. They were like, oh, I, she said, I don't know anything about special ed. She said, but I'm always, I'm seeing your, seeing you guys everywhere. I'm like.
Goal check.
I'm like, I don't know if you're complimenting me or not, but I'm going to say thank you. For me, that's a good thing.
It would be great if one of you guys could follow with us.
Actually go to their board meetings and all of that.
Really, it's needed, needed for sure. So thank you all so much.
Your Instagram is really good. Then that's public and everybody could see it. So I think that's, it's really been updated frequently. My microphone, I'm sorry.
No, it's great.
So I think that's a big change in what the community can see. They don't need to subscribe to anything, reading, you know, if they want to go, it's, the information is there. So that's, I think, a big change, or it's improved. I'm not saying it wasn't good before, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you all for your support and your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you both. Coming out.
Good night.
All right, Angel, now really come on over. Speed reading here. So yeah, welcome, Angel Charles.
Do you want to share the memo or the overview?
How about the infographic first, please?
Angel, we're pulling that up. Can you just introduce yourself a little bit more formally?
Hi, I'm Angel Charles. I'm the Director of Student Services for Concord and Concord Carlisle. My second year.
Awesome.
Okay, great. So I have a brief, but I think important set of updates for all of you with regards to special education services and programs across both districts. I found myself, in the time that I've been in this role, fielding more questions than I would have anticipated about what types of services and programs that we offer across both of our districts. I think one thing that's made it tricky was that, over the course of the years, as our programs were developed and created, they've all had very different names. So trying to sort of organize and sync up to figure out what's the best way for us to raise awareness about what sort of offerings that we have and then provide the greatest level of clarity that we can offer to, to families, to the community in general. I took a big leap this year by finally getting to move the needle so that we could get to a consistent naming protocol for our programs. And I was really grateful that the program staff across all of the schools not only appreciated it, but were like, thank you, it's been so long.
It's so small, but it's so big.
It is so big. But, you know, in, in the rollout and then putting together this graphic felt really good because I feel like at a glance, we can get this on our webpage so that if a parent is, I get a lot of phone calls, believe it or not, from people as far as, you know, being in other states, well, you're thinking about moving to Concord. What kind of programs do you have? It's, it's wild. So being able to have this graphic on our website hopefully will provide a level of clarity about the continuum of services that we offer from our integrated preschool where everything starts, all the way to our launch program. So I wanted to talk a little bit about who we're serving in these populations and then also provide you with sort of a brief description of each one of these programs. So of course, as you know, our integrated preschool is where everything starts. We're currently serving 31 students with IEPs and 32 community peers in our five integrated preschool classrooms. And again, if you look sort of, we, they, they do it all at the integrated preschool. It's my happy place. It's where we go for a walk when I need a minute. And they just do incredible work at the integrated preschool. The first column that you're looking at are what we would refer to as specialized instruction, but not necessarily within a program. This could be reading services, it could be math, it could be any dose of service that the child requires. Similar in pink, and that's offered at all the levels and all the schools, are related services. This is speech, this is occupational therapy, physical therapy, BCBA, any sort of related service. The next column is what has been referred to in the past two years at the high school as our anchor program, formerly known as Access at the Middle School and Branch at the Elementary School. We have gone with anchor because it's, it's pretty simple, it's clear. Anchor is our therapeutic, social-emotional program. In our elementary anchor program, we're currently serving 11 students. There are eight students in that program at Concord Middle School currently, and there are 34 students in that program at CCHS, making that total of 53 students and our most subscribed program across the both districts. Our next district-wide program is our Literacy and Beyond, which is our language-based program. That's a close second as far as number of students that we're serving. We're serving 10 students at the elementary level at the Willard School, 13 at CMS in grades six to eight, and 24 students, making a total of 47. So those are students in our language-based program. Pathways is a program that was named and longstanding at the high school and then has sort of grown from, it's preschool, high school, and now it's sort of grown through the middle. And that is our more intensive program. That program is serving 10 students at Thoreau Elementary School currently. There are 11 at Concord Middle School, and there are eight at the high school, making a total of 29 students. Bridge is our partial inclusion program for students with autism spectrum disorder and related social communication disorders. And that program is also quite large at the elementary level. It's serving 16 students at Thoreau, eight students at Concord Middle School, and 14 at the high school, making a total of 38. To round out our range of programs, we have our launch program, which is our transition program for our students who are 18 to 22. And we currently have four students in that program and more to come. So I could have shared projections for next year, but I wanted to save that for the fall, when I see you in the fall, to give you an update. But along with this graphic and, and information in order to provide some clarity, the next document that I pulled together is a consolidated high-level overview, which we would like to be public-facing and posted on our website. So when people have questions about, so I see anchor, what does anchor mean? What are the related services? I need some sort of a description. So I couldn't be more pleased to have this be concise. Hopefully it's clear. I'm looking for feedback on if there's any sort of lack of clarity. But I think this is going to be public-facing, raise awareness, and I think parents will feel more informed. There's nothing worse when, you know, parents will say, and they have said this to us, we wish we knew, we wish we knew sooner, you know, what, what you had and what you do. So being able to share this, you know, far and wide is, is going to be important.
In that same spirit, I think, you know, there's, there's, we have a lot of meetings throughout the year. We've talked about special education a number of times. A lot of us around the table have, did, actually went into all the schools with, with you and Dr. Hunter and had an opportunity to see all those programs on the infographics. So, and see the specialization at each elementary school. One of the questions that we also received from the Finance Committee that was really helpful in our discussion, not only in the fall, but just throughout, and it came up again the other night, was just how great of a job you've been doing with tuitioning other students in. So the numbers that you gave, were those just Concord and Carlisle students? Or was it neighboring community members as well?
Neighboring community members as well.
Great.
Few more in the queue as well.
Yes. Because I think that's one of the things that's been.
Which is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But just, I think it's, it's just a, it's a really great best practice that I think we, you've shown that you can build on it and been really impressed with that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think this document's going to make it even better, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a small, I mean, I hope those numbers meant something. It's roughly 20% of our population are students on IEPs who, who we serve. So now, we could talk about out of district, we've talked about that before. But I think that, you know, looking at totals, we are doing an amazing job at keeping our students in district when they're able to stay. And that's a testament to the work that the school-based teams have done over the years to make it an inclusive and welcoming environment. And they've been willing to, you know, do whatever they needed to do to be prepared to work with whoever they've got in their buildings.
Can I ask a question? I can't believe I've never asked this question. This seems to be very comprehensive to me in terms of that we're able to cohort groups of kids in an effort to keep them in district, because we know that that's right for children. Is, are, are, are many other districts able to replicate what we've done? Is it common? Is this unique? Like, I actually don't know.
I mean.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I came from a very large urban district that did it all. I mean, they did it all. I think there's a range depending, I think we're just the right size. We're doing as much as we possibly can at the size of the districts that we are. I think we, the fact that other districts reach out and say, you know, even at the elementary level, you know, is it possible for us to send you a packet to consider students? That's surprising to me.
At least I can give anecdotal but concrete information. So on the Case Collaborative Board, which I sit with 11 other superintendents, you know, the collaboratives are having to adjust because any of us that are able to do it enough to scale, to build a program, we're doing it. But not everybody can build everything. And the collaboratives are seeing, they're too, we're too good at sharing it to each other before we go to the collaborative because it's cheaper and it's more inclusive. And the collaboratives are having to then adjust their programming to be the more extensively out of the mainstream type of scenarios. So I think there are more and more doing it, for all the good reasons we did it. But everybody hits their capacity at some point. And the smaller districts, you know, Carlisle being on the small end, but like, we work a lot with like Maynard and even Bedford, you know, they're, they're sort of, you know, a little bit bigger, but not quite big enough to build every program. So this gift of the regional cohorting is becoming really a positive thing for everybody.
Angel, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions about the programming. I'm not completely familiar with it, but as a special ed parent, looking at that chart, a couple of the things that would come to mind would be classroom size. How many students are in a classroom? How many educators? Are they inclusion? I heard you say that, I think the pathways was partial inclusion. Are they sub-separate? You know, I know the student size of the classroom would be something that would be on my mind based on the diagnosis or, you know, the level of ability of the child. Those would be things that I'd be looking for.
For sure. So we have that information. It's. It's a more detailed sort of exit and entrance criteria that we work with parents when we recommend a student for one of these programs. Some of these programs by design are set up to offer both inclusion opportunities or depending more or less on the child's ability to have meaningful access to inclusion on either a given day or a given period of time, where others are designed to be partial inclusion or full inclusion programs. So we work closely with families to make sure that they know, you know, here's the, we have visits when we recommend the program. They get to meet the teachers, they get to see, here are the number of students, here's the number of staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Just on the infographic, you know, it's my favorite thing that you do is that infographic, but I really like this, this updated version is so much more clear and the program names, it makes a huge difference.
I know.
Because, I mean, people are like, what is Branch? What is Access? What is this? What is that?
Conversation we have. Just rip the band-aid off the names and fix it.
I totally appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's bigger, so you can see it. The other one was just so choppy that you could see the continuum, but it was difficult to read. So I totally appreciate the updated infographic and the narrative because the narrative is important to go with it. So when people are looking around the website, am I moving to Concord? Am I not moving to Concord? They at least have someplace to go. I've had real estate agents call me before, and they, they really want this information.
Me too.
So if we can, yes. I'm going to be able to point somebody in that direction, I think is really exceptional.
Relocation specialists.
Yes.
Who are moving.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Angel, is this, this new, like the descriptors, or is that on the website currently, or that's...
I wanted you to see it first. Now it's going up on the website.
Okay. I think that's, I mean, that's wonderful.
Following what Tracy said, I think even for K-8 parents, it was always a mystery exactly what their pathway was. I mean, you could find out from you, but you know, you always, this makes it much more clear, I think, and easy to see if you're a fourth grade or fifth grade parent, kind of what the trajectory is going to be.
The other thing I wanted to ask you is that the many, many benefits of the new middle school, I would think this would be one of the biggest.
You have no idea.
Yeah. So, because, you know, I know it was bad to have the school separate six, eight, but at least when you were in one building, six, eight, you could see the trajectory. But now you are all in one building. Because I think that must have been very difficult to take sixth graders who have been in one setting, special education, and move them over to a new building. That must have been kind of difficult, but now they're all in one building. So I'm sure that's making...
Huge difference.
Something that's already a big task, not as big.
One other thing that was really sweet, and I, I mean, I, I knew it was going to happen, but I didn't realize how wonderful it would be, would be that, you know, some of these students started together in these programs at the elementary level. So when we had the sixth and seventh grade in two different, seventh and eighth in different building, when, now that they're in one building, it kind of felt like getting back together with a reunion of your, your old friends that you had been with for potentially a number of years. So, and also just the physical location and the mindfulness and plan, planning that went into the design of where the spaces are, you know, making sure that there's an accessible restroom right within one of the, all of these things were, were really just well-done to make that transition much more comfortable for those students. So it's, it's been amazing.
It's great. I know we have the, the document that was just up, but we have one more, the present, oh, no, we have the presentation. Yeah, is there anything else that we want to go through?
No.
Those are the highlights.
Do you need any...
Come to the store.
I was just going to ask you.
Can I ask about the store? How is it going?
It's going well. We are now, like, we're in a groove. The next thing that we do is need to figure out how to get more people in and to raise our visibility. So we're talking about an Instagram page, maybe some PSAs on the radio station, trying to just raise awareness to get more people in. One of the challenges I hear from, from teachers and staff who want to come is, you know, the hours don't really work out.
Yeah, we're going to have to do something.
We're going to have to, we'll eventually figure that out because they're open from nine to two, and that's when some of the elementary schools are in session. It's not ideal. But, you know, it's one, one thing at a time. We are, we're open and we are continuing to create inventory and the inventory, the quality of the inventory gets better and better. So just keep spreading the word, that would be great. And that's my other happy place.
Is it possible to sell Kixxer Cancer stuff there? I don't know who owns that. I, I don't.
I don't know. Kixx is, Kixx is very specific about their merch, and they, I think they have a relationship with a store enacted that does all of the shirts and all that, but I'm sure there would be something, it might not be the actual shirts, but something that they do, they can sell.
Yeah, or even sell them there, right?
Provider.
We just got in a shipment of, of elementary school and preschool-sized shirts, so.
Oh, that's great.
A lot of it, we started with the adults, so these are going to be really cute as we continue to roll out the on-demand merch. No onesies yet, but we have great throw blankets that you, while you're watching your fall and winter sports, that you can, that say CC on that.
I think we're going to need some advertising that the kids can help with.
I mean, I think I heard at, in the Thorough Playground presentation that it's Spirit Day on Friday, so.
Opportunity comes.
Get your Spirit wear.
Exactly.
Kixx, like the pop-ups, they're all, a lot of them are run by National Charity League and volunteers that just are selling merchandise. So I'm sure you could be really helpful with selling their bracelets, their shirts, their sweatshirts, because they do need help with that. And Mighty Moose would be the same.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Bob knows all the rules about that, so he'll, I'm sure he'll...
Do we get to keep the money, or we don't?
No, you don't get to keep the money. That's the only thing. But they bring their own square and everything with them.
And also, but that's like, even though you don't have to keep the money.
It actually fits, gets people in the building.
Gets people in the...
All about the foot tracking.
So just because this is a recorded meeting, and we do have members of the press either here or watching, can you give the hours and the location of the store?
Yes, we are at 199 Sudbury Road in Concord, right in the Crosby's Marketplace, and we are open Monday through Friday from nine to two.
Including half-day Wednesdays in Concord.
Correct. So if you are an elementary family and you want to come by after early release, please do.
That would be great.
Have there been any stories in the bridge about...
Yes, the bridge has done a really nice job.
Some really, really great ones.
Good.
And awesome pictures to accompany it.
Yeah. Keep them coming. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Angel. Thanks.
Thank you for listening to the programs, too.
It's really helpful.
Even for us.
All right, so the next two items should be fairly quick. I am going to pull the, the goals document that we've had on the, the drive, just updated it. This is a discussion portion, so if anyone has feedback on this, we can talk about it now. Screen is not, it's behind me. Okay. So these are the goals that we had committed to at the beginning of our time together, I guess, the year for the school committee. As a reminder, there's, I think, eight of them. Yes, eight of them, and they all have SMART goals. We're pretty much been working really hard to move them on, you know, to get, keep them on track. So we're, we're good. Some of them are completed for the end of the year. So those go out all the way. You'll see that one of them is red, it's the cell phone policy, and it's, honestly, we're going to cover both districts tonight very quickly, or more, a little bit more of a robust conversation during the CPS portion, but through the lens of the region, for where we are, the portion of the meeting we're in now, it's red. Honestly, just because we're not going to have a voted-on policy by May for the region, but that's after some really thoughtful conversation in the policy subcommittee that Cynthia Carey and I are on with Dr. Hunter. But I think it was some good thought into why we're not going to have a policy by May for the high school. CPS will, will discuss K through eight shortly. But as far as everything else, we're on, we're on track. There are some things that are still, need to get done by May, but I haven't heard from anyone that anything is, is off-track. If there is that, bring it up now. But I would just say that if we go through all of these student achievement and success, we've covered YRBS, we've talked about opportunities to improve, we will continue to do that. That's why it's not green till the end. So as we start going through the specifics of, of budget items that have come up, how we want to allocate things based on that feedback, we spent a lot of, a lot of time discussing that. We just went through some of the special education, especially IEP, we continue to do that. Shelley's done a great job going through some of the AP classes, so we're going to continue to do that if there's more need for that. Just need to, to let us know, and we can update the agenda, but I think we've covered it on two occasions at this point. Andrew has been here to do the DEIB strategic plan. We can consider doing that again if we, if we need to. We've, policies, we've actually done a, done what we've said we're going to do. Again, cell phones with the movement of the Attorney General Office, great feedback, I think, between both districts. We've probably had about 50 to 80 emails, Carrie, that have come in. And I don't think, again, it's really different feedback for K through eight versus a high school, but no shortage of correspondence on that, so I think we have a good pulse on, on what's happening in the communities. Shelley's done a great job of going through the achievement gap. Again, there's still some areas, if we want to keep on going, we can do that, but I think we've done a great job going through that. Story of the school, Carrie's going to, and Tracy and Brian have been working on this. I don't know if you want to give a quick update, but I think we're still...
We're just going to put it on hold for a little while.
Yeah. Yep. Exactly. But progress was made.
We, yes. Yeah.
Yep.
It's intentional, intentional...
Intentional pause.
Pause.
For good reason. And then again, we've done some coffees. We had an opportunity to go into Boston, and we say coffees, we actually mean that more generally, but the pizza night that we had in Boston was great. We actually had our first meeting in, we had coffee in Carlisle, Brian and I ran a coffee at the, at the townhouse, but then in addition to it, we had our first CCRSD school committee meeting ever in Carlisle, last, our last meeting, which was wonderful and really well-received by the community. I think we should consider doing that every year.
Agreed. Yeah, it was really great.
And then, yeah, as we move through the, the budget, no shortage of budget conversations, which is good, that's smart, that is our job. And then I think just getting to the campus completion plan, just a huge thank you to Brian, Tracy, and Alexa for all the work. I think it was, we heard it loud and clear through the Finance Committee, there was no stone unturned through talking to elected officials, CPC, DEI, ARPA, working with both communities on this. So just want to thank you for all the time that you, that you put into that. And I know we haven't talked about it because it's been so much focus on the amenities building, but I think the start of the track, which is another ask around the campus completion from 10 years ago, so really great work, lot, lot has been done there. And then in terms of the operations around our evaluation, we have, that has been a process. One piece is the last one, which is Ayesha and Michelle, if you want to go to charting the course, I know we say this, we've said this a few times, let us know. The other option is we can work with MASCE to have them come here and maybe do a mini course. I personally would love to go through it again. Brian and I took it, what, like six weeks in, maybe even three?
Pretty quickly, yeah.
Which I'm happy we did. Andrew, yes. Yes, yes, Andrew completed his this year.
Alexa and I did it twice, and it's actually...
Worth doing it a second time.
It's worth doing it a second time. Some people do it all the time, and they do do some private charting the courses, too.
Which we did.
Which we did a private one, which was excellent. We did it in Bedford. So just...
I think it's just really important because I think what, what, there is a lot of misconceptions as to what we can and cannot do. We can do a lot, and I think it's just really being educated on what the, the rules are is really helpful, because clarity actually helps you move faster and more efficiently, so.
Maybe we should look into like a, the, one of the private ones, like the, I was at that Bedford one, too.
So much better than any...
So much better. It was like a group of 20 instead of like a, well, how many were at, was yours?
I had like 40.
I had 40.
Yeah. I think we had like 15 to 20.
It's good, because you can focus on your specific community.
And you can actually have like conversations versus just like a lecture, but...
Definitely.
It's an interesting idea.
So...
For next year.
So, yeah, so as we, as we think about it, if there's times and dates we want to do that, but that's great. But if there is one that you're interested in going before we do that, they're offered in very random times and locations, but like Brian and I went to Cape Cod.
You did?
Yeah, it was like the only one we could go to. But it was great. But it also was nice because it was at a vocational school, so we got a chance to see one of the newer schools, which was actually really awesome. So anyway, that's the, the update on the goals. The next piece is, I, like I said, this is really meant for discussion. I was going to create an actual timeline, like similar to what we did for the amenities building, but I did not want to do that because I didn't want it to be written in stone. I want to have a conversation about it, and I'm going to give an overview of what has been talked about specific to the high school around cell phones. From a correspondence standpoint, we've had a number of parents that have reached out asking for a bell-to-bell at the high school. We've actually had a number of students reach out asking for us not to do that. And as we, I think we all know, but some of those students are 18, and they're adults and they're voters, and they happen to still be in high school, which is common for everyone. It's been going on for, for as long as a high school has been in existence. But in addition to it, there's also just some, some nuances with the high school population that has been brought up to us. Some of them do span K through 12, like medical conditions that we can write into any policy. But some of them are also students that go off-campus at lunchtime. They're, they're, that is within their right to do that, that are driving, that want to have access to their phone and don't necessarily want to check it in, check it out. Now, we can go through all the logistics of that, which we will, not tonight, but at another meeting. There's also been just some questions around social interactions. Some of the students feel like it's something that they want to get used to as they get ready to go into the adult world. Other students are saying, take my phone, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to have access to my phone during the day. So it's, it's truly a mix from both students, teachers, and parents, and we want to make sure we're not rushing to a decision for the high school. So what we have heard through the forum of the email communications, and I'll just say word-of-mouth around all three communities, is people want to have forums on this, they want us to discuss it here. There is no shortage of expert opinions that have been brought to us through books, podcasts, literature, connections to people who do this for a living in the community. So we want to make sure we're thoughtful in this process. We're not going to get it done before the committee turns over, so we really need to come up with a timeline. So we can talk about it here, I would say we put a five to 10-minute timeline on that for, for tonight, for just to put some ideas out there. I can take notes. And then for the next meeting, I can draft an actual timeline for it. But I think it's important for us to, we all have had separate conversations with different constituents, so we want to make sure that we understand what the Metco families want because they're taking the buses from Boston. So what's the expectation of students there when they, and again, just for the high school, of what's, like what kind of communication parents want to have with their students when they're here in a totally different town? And then again, just as we're talking about like work release or whatever, the, going to community colleges for classes. Anyway, that's, that was the goal of the discussion for tonight. So I think the biggest thing is, is anyone want to voice kind of a desire for like, how many forums we want to have, or what the cadence would be, a goal, any timeline?
I think you guys should do that in the fall.
Exactly.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I agree. Like, I just think...
Yeah.
I, I feel strongly at this juncture, really, that the role of Lori and of the administration of the high school especially is to focus on the kids at the high school, and this is too much for right now. So I think we just stay able to the fall. And I think that.
We're not doing it next year, anyway.
For next year.
Right.
We're not doing anything to be implemented.
It's gonna take a long time.
It's gonna take a while. And I don't know how many forums it's gonna look, what that's gonna look like. But I do think you have lots of groups at the high school. You've got the student senate. You've got the class government. You have school committee reps. You have school advisory council. There's plenty of ways to get feedback. And I just think we should wait till the fall to even consider that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think the biggest takeaway that I'm hearing, though, is that, number one, the student government and student body that is there should be involved. And then I think the, the second piece is that I want to make sure we can wrap this up with a vote because of the volume of feedback that we got in. I don't want this committee to finish their term and, and not commit to what we wrote down. So I think, is it fair to, I don't even want to take a vote, or if we just want to say, is it fair to say that we can just wait until the fall for the next committee to?
The fall's the right time.
I think, I don't think you need to take a vote.
Great.
Just before we leave that.
Decide when they need, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Just feedback on the last three days. There's no way I would have taken their phones or made them lock them when the lifeline to their well-being was through that phone. I literally looked at Brian and Katie Monday and said, I can't, I would, I know every child can get their parent in a minute. And that is giving me enormous comfort this week. So there's, there's a lot that goes into that. And it's not simple. But there's some really basic things that cell phones can allow if we can figure out how to mitigate the challenges. And we didn't undo the rules. We still put them in the caddies if teachers could handle that. But I'll tell you, I had such comfort knowing that families were in touch with their children as they came back this week. I cannot tell you.
Agreed, agreed. And I think the biggest other feedback, I'd say, at a macro level that we've had before the past couple of weeks has been, every family has different decisions. And I think the six hours at school, we have to just, I think, come together as a community to decide what is the norm and the expectation within the schools. And then what is like a social media policy versus cell phones? Those are the questions, at least, that I had throughout this whole process. But anyway, more to come. So, okay, to the fall.
Yeah.
All right, close that out. So, for the high school. All right, so let's move on to action items. Lori, can you just give us a quick overview of the CCHS travel hiking in the Dolomites?
This, this one came in after your last meeting where you approved the bulk of the others. So Ray Pavlik in the science department is looking in Q5 of '26, so June of '26, he'd like to take some students hiking in Italy. I think you've got the dates, the cost. You've got most of the information in the form, I think. This would be the first approval, so he can plan and start to recruit in the fall, right when we get back. He just didn't get it pulled together. I think you probably have one more coming that a teacher's working on, probably domestic. But anyway, I told them I'd bring them as they were ready. So this is the first read, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Is this a travel vendor that's been used previously?
Yes. And Ray's one of our most experienced chaperones.
Okay.
I move to approve the hiking trip in the Dolomites. Is that what we're doing?
First read, yeah.
Second.
Seconded.
Need more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. So at this point, the region, we have a motion to adjourn the regional school district meeting.
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Dr. Hunter, for all the work this week. So, thank you very much.
It was bound to go. That's the first time that happened in public.
Human.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna adjourn the region very quietly.
Okay. CPS will stay in session.
Good night.
It's you, too.
Good night, Carlisle.
Thank you. It's about right.
Are you sticking?
Nope.
No, she's on the radio.
Night, Boston.
Night, Ayesha. Michelle's still here.
Michelle's leaving, too.
Oh.
Okay, so we are going to, we moved to public comment from the regional meeting. And we're gonna start with public comments. So I will, just as a reminder, our policy, our public comment period will be a period of 10 minutes. As a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you're in the room and would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me and you will be called to speak, or you can step up to the microphone. If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. When called to speak, please state your name and address before you speak. We will go every other, starting with a comment in the room, and then taking a comment on Zoom. We'll have three minutes. I do not have a phone if somebody has.
Was there a specific about agenda items that you were gonna discuss, if you can clarify this?
For this evening, we are asking that all comments be specific to agenda items on the CPS agenda.
Which are?
Which are the Thoreau Playground and the K to eight cellphone policy. So with that, if there are any, are there any public comments in the room?
Thanks, Carrie. And Dave Nicholson, Old Marlborough Road, and the comment relates to the Thoreau Playground. We'll just start by thanking the kids and congratulate the committee for all the money you've raised. A huge, huge time and effort has gone into this. My wife and I raised comments about accessibility of the playground back in March. And tremendous progress has been made. Thanks in particular to Conquer Public Schools committing $125,000 from the operating budget to help with the service area. So thank you, Dr. Hunter, for that, especially given the earlier comments around budget challenges. You know, we absolutely want this playground to be built as quickly as possible. And it's a little challenging to stand up here tonight because we know how much work has gone into this. But it's really important to speak up on behalf of a community that has been underrepresented and sidelined through the process. I would urge the school committee to take a step back and critically assess whether the current playground design truly reflects the leading design goal of inclusivity. Right now, from the lens of someone who parents a child with disability and has lived this experience, the design does not. The design heavily features aerial and rope-based elements that are inaccessible to many children, particularly those with disabilities. Those structures offer no meaningful opportunity for equitable play. Despite repeated input, it is deeply troubling that only one play element that supports inclusive play was added to the design. That decision raises real concerns. How can a park be considered inclusive without basic features like ramps? In fact, proposed accessible elements have been removed from the design. Earlier, Joe talked about the pyramid or cone spinner being accessible for a wheelchair user. I'm wondering, how are the kids going to get on that? Are staff gonna help them? And these are wheelchair users, right? So have we really thought through the barriers that exist? I can tell you that as a parent of a child with cerebral palsy, that comment is not only naive, but it's also too offensive to suggest that consists of inclusive design. Having lived the experience firsthand, having two spinners actually creates an experience of segregation. One spinner is dynamic and cool and really fun, while the other one becomes the disabled kid spinner. We have witnessed this firsthand. And in fact, we shared this feedback multiple times with Carrie and Dr. Hunter through the process. During those discussions, we were told that design tonight represents a compromise. In truth, not a single compromise has been made as respects the original plans and the extent of the play elements. The zip line was added, but nothing else was compromised on. As we said, other elements were in fact removed. So able-bodied children can access everything on that playground, but that's not true of those with physical disabilities. I would argue that that's actually discriminating against those kids who have far fewer elements that they can access. Joe said the high 12-foot element was what all the kids wanted. The high slide is the cool place to be. So I'm curious, do we ever talk about ramps for that, so that all children could in fact enjoy it?
Dave, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. So a ton of time and effort has gone into this. And I want to reiterate our thanks to Mitch and the whole playground committee. But right now, we fall a little short of that inclusive design. And so we're asking the school committee to think about how you can make us, from a playground that's a nice design, a great improvement, something that's truly great and inclusive.
Thank you. Is there anybody online?
I promoted Heidi Kater. Does she want to speak? She had her hand up.
I think she left.
Yeah.
Doesn't know anymore.
She's a panelist, because I promoted her. Okay.
No?
I don't think so.
Is there anyone else in the room? Okay, I will close public comment.
I think somebody just got.
Oh. Oh. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mary Little. I live at 24 Brown Street. I just want to reiterate what everyone said earlier about the incredible process that everybody went through, including the students, to create this design. I really, truly believe that the people on the committee took everyone's needs to heart and wanted to make this a space for everybody. I think a lot of work went into it. I totally respect everything that you just said. But I, I want you to think about just all of the needs of everyone in our community and making this a great place base for truly everybody. I think that even some, well, I'm not an expert, but I guess I just want to, yeah, I think everyone did so much work. And it would be a shame to not let this come to fruition. I think it's an amazing design that really does allow everyone to enjoy a space with friends.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I will close public comment. We're gonna move into the Thoreau Playground. So we have two votes that we're taking this evening. The first is, and of course, discussion on the playground, but just so we know where we're headed, we have two votes. The first is a vote on the design as presented. We're gonna discuss it. And then the second is a vote to accept the donation that Mitch gave to Bob. So is there any, do we want to start? I, I'll start with a little bit on the playground. I was the liaison from the committee to the playground. And I think from the beginning, I joined in the fall. It has always been thought of as a playground that is accessible to everyone, where everybody can come together and play in some capacity. And that's going to mean different things to different children. And I think that is why, I was listening to the kids as they were talking tonight, and it was so interesting to hear them talk about how they were hearing different priorities from all different kids, and how even they had to whittle it down to what, what made sense for their own, for their own proposal to the big, larger playground committee group. So I think this has been a very involved process. Dr. Hunter and I have had multiple conversations with Dave and other families, other families about accessibility in particular. And we, I'm actually really proud of the progress that we made. We went from 30% rubber, rubberized cover to eighty, over 80%. The only place of the playground that isn't rubberized is a small portion under the swings. There's like a midsection that Joe walked us through that had a harness, and then also the, I forget, with the bucket swing that has rubber under it. And then there's mulcher woodchips on either side. Other than that, the entire playground. And I think, one of the things that I think is so important about that is, there were members of the community that came forward and raised some really, really good arguments that having, having mulch and woodchips on other aspects of the playground made it so that even if these structures were accessible, they couldn't get there because of a wheelchair. And I, that, that is incredibly, incredibly compelling. And we made a very big change. The district invested heavily, $125,000 to make that a reality. We added a dual-track zip line instead of a single track, which was a costly change. We added the accessible sprinting structure. And this was in addition to the accessible structures that were already in place, like the spinning, sorry, the music station, the sensory area, the swings, and, and among some other aspects of it. And I think Justin was talking about just kind of like the free space. So I, I think, I hear, I hear you. And I, I also think there are many other opinions and perspectives and wishes and demands on the playground that we've also had to take into account as we think about the budget that we have and our task at hand. So the, I think, to be very clear, the initial, 13 iterations ago, the initial design was not just ADA compliant, but, but beyond. And this one is ADA compliant and then some. So, so anyway, I, I think it has, I'm really proud of the final product, but I, I just wanted to share that perspective.
And we did have that discussion back in the fall about the rubberization and how much rubberization was on the playground. Because I think I brought up some concerns about that with woodchips and wheelchairs. And so like, that's been a significant change on.
It's a big change, yes.
Yeah.
And a good one. I think that was a great one.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep.
And the current playground, I have not been back there for a little while, has no rubber, right? It's just?
So the one that's newest that we put in a few years ago has the rubber pathways.
Got it.
To get to the equipment.
What the initial.
Certainly doesn't have anything. Alcott and Willard have no pathways of any kind and is all wood.
Right. And these pathways go right to the building? I'm sorry, I.
The pathways go through the playground so that a wheelchair has the rubberized surface to go between pieces of equipment.
And they go all the way to the building?
No, that's paved.
And then that's paved.
Okay, got it.
Yep. You know, I think having been in on this, either in the meetings or on consult with Justin, I think the, the population at Thoreau was always the front and center set of needs. There's a wide range of needs within that population. I think that the committee addressed those adeptly and thoroughly. We had the special education staff sitting at the table to do those. I think the part with the physical limitations was the part we needed to go double back on. And we did. To find money, we didn't have. And that was through the capital budget, just for clarity with FinCom or whoever's watching, capital accounts. And I think, I think we came as far as we needed to. I know we didn't meet all the asks, but to your point, I think there were a lot of other asks that we didn't meet as well. And I think we're really looking forward to having all kids out there. And now I can see them all having their spaces and thriving. I don't think, I think there's other kids in other settings that aren't going to be able to access all of the equipment. There are some students with sensory needs that I don't know that the musical equipment's going to be their thing at all. We're putting headphones on them as they walk around the building on a daily basis. So I think, I think the goal of a playground of this scope is to have something for everybody, but maybe not everything is for everybody.
Understood.
So I, I think we came a long way and tried to be really responsive.
Can I just ask two questions? So I had watched the Commission on Disability meeting, and there was some discussion about compliance. So this is fully ADA compliant plus?
We have never not been ADA compliant.
Yes, right.
From the beginning, we were ADA compliant and beyond. And to Carrie's point, to be at 80% rubberized with multiple equipment, we're way beyond legal requirements.
Right. And then, you know, in terms of school committee, like this is out of our lane for operations, but I just want to ask you the questions. So only because it came up, there would be training for staff members as to how kids can access different features of the playground.
Of course. And we do that on an individual basis now, based on the child's needs. We go out and assess the playground and adults appropriate to them, scope it out, and sometimes bring them out there individually when nobody's around and get them set up for success.
Okay.
Can I ask a dumb question? But we're pretty much at budget with this, right? There's no pennies unturned, right?
Yeah.
We've optimized supplier and supply chain, all that stuff.
Oh, yes. Yeah, Joe's been really great at all of that. State bid list means you're getting the best price anyway. And meeting all the legal requirements of prevailing wage and all that goes with public billing work.
Yeah, I'm good.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. I will move to approve the design of the Thoreau Playground as presented this evening.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Just thank you guys. I know that this work is hard. And, you know, to your point, I think not everything can be everything to everyone. And so I feel comfortable that you've addressed that appropriately. As I'm not on the committee, but I trust that that's happened. So I appreciate that. It's hard.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second vote is to approve the.
Accept.
Accept the donation, correct?
Yeah.
So while not large in size, it is large in.
Yeah, it is.
Metaphorically, large.
So I, do you have the amount?
Yeah.
You sent it to me, Bob.
It's written.
Here, we'll read it. Three hundred, it's a big number. Let's do it slowly. Thanks to the fundraising committee. $383,357.54.
Oh, so go ahead. I move to accept the playground donation in the amount of $383,354.57.
Who's, who's the entity it's from? Is it the?
Thoreau PTG, is it?
The PTG's been carrying the funds designated for the playground.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. And then if we could have the authority to approve the additional donations they potentially would raise, we don't have to name the amount, but you could, we don't have to bring it to school committee again.
Oh, do you want to add that?
What?
As well as any additional funds raised.
Oh, we have verbal commitments.
Understood. Okay, so I'm gonna retract my motion. I'm gonna put out a new one, which is, I move to accept the donation from the Thoreau PTG in the amount of $383,357.54. And also, any additional funds raised subsequent to this acceptance.
Thank you.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
I just want to say Courtney Ward and Christina Asperu have been the like, absolute fundraising beasts for this project. They are incredible. And I am, don't put your phones down because I'm gonna call you about the track soon. You two are absolutely phenomenal. You're organized and like fierce, and you are fearless, and you will not stop until you reach your goal. And I'm just so eternally grateful that both of you were leading this charge. So thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys have moms who are total rock stars. Should be really proud of them.
And it would be great if you could, when you go to the next chair's breakfast, maybe talk about the fundraising that's been done for the Thoreau Playground, just so, you know, the town is aware of the fundraising that we're doing.
Yeah, we've been talking about it on a very regular basis.
Good, I love that.
I love that. But we will continue. $383,574.54, $357, $357.54. Amazing. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, aye.
And with that, we will adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
K-8 cell phone policy.
Oh, my God.
Sorry.
Sorry, not with it. K-8 cell phone policy, okay. So, K-8 cell phone policy, okay. So we have been talking for a while. Obviously, Julie started this conversation at the high school. We are completely having completely separate conversations because the needs are very different between pre-K to eighth to ninth grade and beyond. So this is the K-8 conversation. Already in the handbook, there is a rule, what do you, like an expectation that kids will not have cell phones. I included that in our packet. The language says they are prohibited from having, that they will remain in backpacks all day long. However, there is no policy that would support that, which typically the school committee has some kind of policy backing up the handbook. So this is, so what I have done is I took the Attorney General's recommended bell-to-bell policy that is geared towards all ages, K through 12, and they break it out by what's expected of different age groups. It is very detailed, as I mentioned, and I think for our purposes, we are not, we do not have operational authority as a school committee, so we would not be talking about enforcement or consequences or anything like that as it is mentioned in this example. But I wanted to have a starting point for us to kind of launch into the conversation. So this, I have created a Google Doc. I also set the Attorney General's document around, and I guess before we even go into the line item, I'm curious if we can just kind of go around the table and get a sense of where everybody is on this. Are we all on the same page that a bell-to-bell policy for CPS makes sense? And if so, do we want to kind of discuss at a high level what we like or don't like about the AG's policy?
I have a question. Is the consensus on the Hill at this point that the AG's policy is, you know, there are like 12 proposed pieces of legislation? All of them are very different. Different experts in our own community are supporting different bills. Is the consensus, has consensus been reached as to what we think the prevailing policy is going to be?
No.
Yeah, no.
This is, this is an example.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, to, you know, when we think about the differences between a policy and a handbook, I think it's very, easy's probably not the right word, but you, we can, I think we can easily draft a policy that then, that we could agree with, that supports what's in the handbook, and then gives you authority to enforce and create protocols and procedures to enforce it. I don't think that's going to be particularly challenging at all.
We want to do this all together tonight?
Well, no, I think actually if we can agree on a direction, then
Then you'll draft a policy.
I can draft a policy that we look at line by line. But I wanted to give something as like a starting point, as like, I just feel like a blank page is hard to start a conversation. So if at a high level, like what the, what the handbook says is, again, devices, it actually specifically says cell phones, and we should probably, like, one question I had for the committee is like, do we want to expand upon that to devices, like Apple watches and gizmos and all of the things?
Gets harder and harder the more you put in there.
Well, it changes. Well, I guess you could just say devices, but I don't know. I don't know.
It changes, the watches are harder to enforce, because they're on their wrists.
Yeah.
Harder to know they're there.
The cell phone is, well, my opinion would be, I think the cell phone is the prevailing Yes. device that creates the most challenge
Yeah.
in schools from both the perspective of the psychological impact on the student as well as the attentional problems in a classroom. So I don't, I would not recommend to expand it.
To other devices?
I would not, yeah.
I mean.
And also, you're going to have legislation that's going to be about cell phones, so I think.
It should mirror what the track is.
Yeah, I think that that's
That is where the
Direction is going.
Conversation is, yes.
So.
And I guess my only other piece is just the school events, like I just think about the D.C. trip in particular. Like, I do think that that
We're talking about in the school building, so you
In the school building, but it says school events.
This actually does include school events.
School-sponsored events. So that is just one consideration that I think that we need to have.
It's up to staff.
Yeah, and that's, I think, for discussion.
Also, that's part of the enforcement, I think.
Yeah, we aren't collecting cell phones.
Talking about these hours.
School hours.
Yep.
School events.
I would take out events.
Not field trip.
Yeah.
I would take out events.
But if staff doesn't want people to bring a device on a, if staff doesn't want kids, which I know happens at certain times, that's up to the staff.
Yeah.
Right?
To your point, I think we want discretion and not to have you put it in the policy.
I would agree. I think we're talking about eight, or whatever, 8:30 to 3:30.
It's the academic hours, I think you're focused.
And I think, and I think the, sorry to interrupt you, and I think the, I just, and the socialization that occurs in those hours. I think you're talking about both a physical location and a specified number of hours. At a dance, at a soccer game, on a trip, I think are very different things that we should not include. It becomes too complicated.
Notice that they said K-5, don't bring it to school, which is different than what we specify right now, so that's just
Yeah, I, we haven't felt like that's our decision necessarily.
That's what this says, I'm not just
The parents who get them at K-5 have usually very specific reasons they've done that.
And I think that we need to get Michelle's input for K-5, too.
Right.
For
Yeah, yeah. Michelle.
McDougal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. When they have them that young, there was a family thinking going on.
Totally.
This was just a start.
Yeah, no.
She was just throwing something out, and I don't think she got a lot of feedback. It was fast, you know?
She got a lot of feedback the day she was with the superintendents. I know that, I was there for that.
So I think we were generally, we're in favor of K-8 not having phones out in school? Does that kind of summarize it?
Yes.
In school?
Which is what we're doing.
Yeah. It's still difficult as they get older, because, you know.
Yeah.
We're working hard at it and
I think it's always a community effort, right?
Agreed. Very much agreed.
Okay, so it sounds like to me we should move forward with a K to eight, or I guess for the purposes of CPS, pre-K. I can't imagine a preschooler having a cell phone, but pre-K through eight, yeah, a pre-K through eight bell-to-bell policy that is high-level, specific to cell phones.
During school hours.
During school hours with the exclusion of school events, and then I think we also have to include, of course, exceptions.
For medical.
Right.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay.
And I E P's, whatever, exceptions.
Yep. Okay, anything else? And then I guess from there, I will take the Attorney Generals that we have, some language from there, and then I'll, if you have other, like, policies that you've seen at the state or other level that you want me to take a look at, I'm happy to do that as I write it.
I've seen some others that were very similar with having a lot of consequence in there and discipline, so I think
Which is not what we're
Haven't seen many, the ones I've seen, that's what's been in there.
Okay.
Do we all kind of agree that that's not our curvy and it shouldn't
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
It can change, and it should change.
What?
The consequences.
Oh, right.
Right.
But that's for you to determine, and the purpose of it is for this policy to back you up in determining that.
So would things like smartwatches then just be in your handbook, or?
Yeah, we can talk on that when we bring the handbook to you. We, we don't, you know, the youngest kids, we try to say, don't bring them, but like, I think there are people who do it with intention, so they can
Right.
know where their child is or get a quick whatever, and It's hard, yeah.
I agree, like, maybe it doesn't need to be in the cell phone policy, but then I think you might just see a shift in like middle school, like everyone, I mean, that's already happened. I don't know.
Yeah.
We discourage them, I guess is the word I'd use right now, but
Yeah.
They're there, and then if they're there, we tell them not to be on them.
Either in a policy or in a handbook, you know?
I mean, they have to take them off during MCAS, that's all there is.
Can they be an airplane move?
It's a whole new world to me.
That means
I'm still in my Casio.
And wear your watch.
Okay. Great, so I will move to our next meeting for, I guess that would probably be our first read, or does this count as our first read? Probably have an actual draft of the policy.
Yeah.
Okay.